We're going to go ahead and call the City Commission meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Al, can you do roll call?
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mybaum.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of minutes of the work session of May 24th and the regular meeting of May 24th, 2021. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? All right, Al, roll call.
You can do a voice vote on this.
Sweet, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And any abstaining? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the schedule of bills.
I move that we pay the bills.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, on bills you do have to go. We'll throw this back and forth just to confuse you a little bit. You have to go by person on this, please.
I did check with Al earlier today on what we could do. The roll call vote and what we had to, and we'll get it figured out. All right, Al, roll call. Aye.
Aye. I'll get my mic on here. Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to the City Manager's reports. I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Moser, members of the Commission, public and staff. Few things for you this evening. First, I'd like to remind you of a link that I sent you to a documentary or video. Missouri River Sedimentation Action Coalition recently put out a short documentary on what's happening with the Missouri River and the sedimentation, as well as efforts to address that in our area. We're going to play that on the Peg Channel, but if you have social media or places you would like to post that or share that, it is really well done and it's really informative for the public. That is an issue that maybe you and I won't necessarily have to confront in our lifetimes, but we should be confronting it now for the future of our area. So very interesting. Former City Commissioner Charlie Gross has a nice cameo in it, so if you don't want to watch it for any other reason, you should watch it to see Charlie. But he does a great job and it's really actually very well done and very informative, well-produced. So if you would take a look at that and share that with your friends, I would appreciate that. Our next meeting is June 28th, and we're going to start talking about everybody's favorite topic, which is the 2022 budget. We're going to start our budget discussion at 5:30, so our regular work session is going to be a bit longer. Then we'll conduct our regular business at 7 o'clock, and then if you need more time, we'll get back together. So we hadn't planned to feed people dinner since people typically don't have food in this venue, but we'll have some munchies and things like that, so please take care of whatever you need to take care of food-wise before you come. And what we're planning to talk about is our capital improvement plan, our five-year capital improvement plan, and then have that fund discussion that you requested at our last budget meeting. So I'm working right now on coming up with descriptions for all the funds, and Al and I will work together on getting current fund balances, and we'll talk through those. We think that's about all we can get done in one evening, and then later on in the summer, we'll talk about operating and everybody's second favorite topic, the BBB. So we'll talk about that later on this summer. So that's at 5:30, and we'll be here. We'll configure the room, since we'll have a lot of staff here, we'll configure the room as we used to with all our microphones up front, and we'll get folks back here in front of the Commission dais, and then we'll have staff here as well. So probably after that, we'll leave the room set as such unless I hear differently from Commissioners, and we'll put more chairs back in the audience, et cetera. I want to talk to you a little bit about our COVID-19 metrics and pull some feedback from you. I emailed those to you earlier today, and Duane said he could pull those up. So all of our goals are met in terms of our COVID metrics. We don't have any cases. You can see them up there on the TV screens, too. We don't have currently any cases in our hospital. Our vaccination rate continues to grow, but it is growing slowly now, but it is still growing, and we have very few active cases. If these metrics continue to be beneficial for you, we can continue to keep doing them. So just wanted to hear from you Commissioners on that because between this small thing we're trying to operate called the Huether Family Aquatic Center and the budget, just another element to do, but we're happy to put those together if we find them valuable yet.
I think we'd be just fine letting those go as long as, you know, our numbers stay down. I don't think we need to continue just to show ourselves over and over that the numbers are low. I think we're just fine without them.
I would say that if a number starts to change, maybe like the vaccination rate suddenly increases, wouldn't that be cool? Or something, if a number starts to change, that we should be notified, but it's been essentially the same for several weeks.
Okay, if I don't hear something different from other Commissioners, we will not report on them, we'll monitor them, but not report them out unless something changes either way, good or bad. On Wednesday, I may see a couple of you, I hope two Commissioners, at the unveiling of the Yankton Thrive Logo Event that will be at Rock Bottom Burgers. Am I saying that correct? Correct me if I'm not saying it right.
River Rock.
River Rock. At 5 o'clock to 7, there'll be some food there as well, and there'll be another short video that I actually make a cameo in, and I do not do as great of a job as Charlie did in the MSAC video. So I want to get your hopes up, but there will be a small presentation and just a time to get together and share in that excitement. Wanted to visit with you a little bit about the Huether Family Aquatic Center. If you haven't been there, why not? Maybe because it's been too busy to get in. We've been averaging close to 1,000 people or more a day, which is very exciting. It's very overwhelming for the Parks and Recreation Staff and for many of our young people who are experiencing, that's their first work experience, and they're just getting really slammed, which is a good thing, right? That's what we wanted. So we do still have some construction items that are minor construction items that are being shored up. We are also victims of our success when it comes to the good planning Todd and his staff put into the concession stand. I've never eaten a dipping dot, but apparently I'm the only one who's never had a dipping dot. They're a hot seller. We had to get a larger dipping dot dispensary. We had to order another freezer because people love hot pretzels, the pizza's flying off the shelf. It's going really well. So we're doing great with concessions. Al's advising us about the fact that a lot of money is spent to receive revenue, so we're using his retail background to help us understand all those things, but we're doing a great job. There's usually a line, and we've actually run out of some things and we're restocking, so it's been really great so far. We have had some injuries, but nothing, you know, nothing out of the realm of normal for our aquatics facility, even our prior aquatics facility, so we're excited about that. The other thing that I wanted to add is that we always, in all public spaces, when groups come together, we have some behavioral challenges, but we actually, so far, I think, are averaging less. I think there's more for kids to do there, there's more things to keep their interest, and it's not so interesting to go, you know, do whatever naughty folks would, you know, do in a changing room or restroom when there's so much to do out into the aquatic center. So I think that's actually been better than it has been in the past. It's still early on in the season, and our lifeguards are getting tired, and they're getting overheated, and we're trying to take care of them the best we can, but I'll be talking with Todd and his staff about, you know, are there ways we can incent the lifeguards? We don't want them to burn out halfway through the summer and not have enough guards to get all the way through the season, so we're going to be talking about that. Questions for Todd or I about the Huether Family Aquatic Center?
Just curious, have either of you or anyone from the city walked through the parking lot to see anecdotally what number of out-of-town vehicles are coming in? Is it almost in-town people?
We don't have to do that because our Recreation Staff is keeping track of zip codes, so when people come, they're keeping track of where the zip codes are, buying season passes and buying day passes. So we are monitoring that, and my intern, who is Peyton Mueller, is going to be working on analyzing that data and doing some reporting out on that. So I'll share some of that with the Commission periodically throughout the season so we know, are we actually drawing? And if we are drawing, where are we drawing from? And that should help us with our marketing. We're hearing a lot of great things and getting a lot of good reviews, so we're excited about that. Mr. Larson, do you have anything you want to add? Okay.
Just a quick question. So like in the schedule of the bills, I noticed that we were spending with the Sioux City Journal to, I assume, promote the Huether Family Aquatic Center. So do we already have specific cities in mind that we've been targeting? And is that then going to be part of the reporting that we'll eventually see?
I can certainly share that. I believe Todd, maybe speak to it more, but I know we're targeting Sioux City. We've done some targeting with Omaha area, not necessarily in their newspaper, but with the shared space that we have with the CVB. Had some space in the, I'm going to call it West Roads Mall, but I think, is that what it is? The West Roads Mall had a marketing space where we were putting some of our information. We're also really targeting the lake population, so if you've been out to the lake, you maybe saw the billboard that we have out there. One of the things we've learned throughout, I guess, our time at the city is the fact that sometimes we overlook a huge population of people that's right under our nose. So we're also really trying to draw from the lake population, and hopefully they're going back to their respective communities. Brittany Orr did report that we've had some sports tourism traffic, so buses that are here that are playing a softball game or a baseball game are then taking extra time to use the aquatic center. So that isn't something that we necessarily predicted would happen, but will give us hopefully some better ideas to where we can market. I think the zip code information will help us as well. When we have all that information put together, we get a little further down the season, we can share some of that and analyze how much marketing we really want to do. We did spend some dollars doing that because we thought we needed to, and certainly has benefited us. We've surpassed our goal in season passes. We've sold over 3,000 season passes now, and, you know, we're having people pay by day passes even after 6 o'clock at night. So, I mean, to me, that also says we didn't overprice our facility because people are coming, so almost more than we can handle. So, very exciting. Also exciting was a successful Rib Fest event. Our Rib Fest host is here on another agenda item, but a great kickoff to summer. Good time was had by all, so we're excited about that. We did have some complaints about some cleanup after Rib Fest, but it wasn't due to what the event organizers did, it was due to some people after bar crowd who thought it would be fun to tip over some porta-potties and tip over some trashes and things like that, but Public Works took care of that, so there's always somebody who's got to do something like that, but we got it picked up and cleaned up. So I think we're on track for a really hot, really fun, really awesome summer, and we'll end that with Riverboat Days this year, and they're here this evening as well. So I'm going to be quiet and let you get to your business unless there's something you have liked to share with me.
All right, are there any other, excuse me, questions for the City Manager? All right, then we'll move on. Now's the time for public appearances. This is for anybody in the public that wants to address the City Commission about an item not on the agenda this evening. Okay, seeing nobody moving forward to the mic, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Our first consent agenda item was already discussed by the City Manager, but we'll be on the discussion to set the budget workshop meeting dates for June 28, 2021, starting at 5:30 PM, and then August 9 to 10, 2021, starting at 5:30 PM. The second consent agenda item is a possible quorum event, also mentioned earlier for tomorrow night at River Rock Event Center. No official Commission action will take place at that. Any, anything to share there? All right, then I think I can do a group vote. All right, all in favor to move the consent agenda items? Say aye. Opposed, nay?
I will officially move the consent agenda, and I would ask for a second.
This is only a second meeting, I will get it down by the next one. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Mybaum, through Al's whispering in your ear. All right, we have a motion and a second. Now we'll vote. Yes, all right. All those in favor say aye. Again, opposed, nay, and anybody abstaining. All right. We'll move on to old business. The first agenda item under old business is a public hearing of ordinance number 1052 regarding medical cannabis. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ross, do you want to, Ross or I guess Amy, walk us through, I know the last time we did the reading, we changed some language in it with our motion to move it on, maybe just kind of update or anything else you want to share with the Commission?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and the public, the medical cannabis ordinance is one that we've talked about with great length, so I won't go through it step by step again. However, some language was changed after our discussion regarding the downtown buildings and entranceways, making sure that we could, in fact, if somebody had a license and wanted to, I guess, retrofit a downtown building, that they wouldn't have to have the double exit. So Ross dealt with that language. I have had absolutely no comment from the public regarding the medical cannabis ordinance either way, other than questions about why aren't we doing what, you know, another city's doing, or why aren't we doing the moratorium? That question actually came from the media, not from the general public, so that tells me either people are not interested or they're okay with the way we're approaching this. I do want the Commission to be advised that as we start to receive some guidelines and guidance from the state, we may have to go back and have an amendment made to our ordinance, but we as a staff are already aware of folks that are looking at potential places that they could have an establishment if they're licensed, so we want to make sure we can give them as much guidance as possible and be as welcoming as we can under our current policies and when they're ready to do this. So Ross, do you want to add anything?
I've heard from a number of interested parties and no criticisms regarding the ordinance, just asking for general guidance so that they can comply with the ordinance, and there seems to be a general cooperative willingness in that regard, so I think we're going to get a lot of interest.
Ross, can you tell the City Commission what happens now if the state would come in and would put out some rulings or guidance that isn't maybe in line with our ordinance? How does that work?
It would be possible that we might have to do a small tweak amendment to the ordinance, basically. At this point in time, I don't see that happening. Today, we saw some preliminary proposed rules from the state. It's very preliminary. They have until the end of October to issue their final rules. Reading through those today didn't appear that that would require any changes to the ordinance structure that we have right here.
Any other Commission discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to the city staff and administration and the people that have been working behind the scenes on this because it is an eventuality, and I know there've been countless hours spent on it. It is going to have an impact on our community, and I think Yankton has done everything in its power to make sure that that impact is positive. So thank you for those of you that are working on it so diligently.
All right, agreed. So thank you to the city staff and to the Committee who put all of the work into doing that and bringing that forward to the City Commission. Is there any public discussion? All right, seeing no movement. Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Old Business Number Two is a public hearing and a Board of Adjustment for the City Commission acting as the Board of Adjustment for memorandum 21-126, a consideration of a variance from the front yard setback requirements in a B2 highway business district. This is for 3007 Broadway Avenue. Jeff Caster, owner. What is your pleasure?
Do we want to start with Dave, just walking us through the Planning Commission decision on this?
Yes, Mr. Mingo, would you like to share with the Commission the action and the discussion with the Planning Commission?
Sure. This is a variance from a front yard setback requirement. This is one of those instances where you, as the Board of Adjustment, are functioning in a quasi-judicial mode, so you are sitting as a judge in a court essentially at this point. Your decision is, can be guided by the recommendation from the Planning Commission, but ultimately, it's your decision. There are criteria by which variances are to be granted. They're set forth in state law and the city ordinance. In this instance, it's, as mentioned, a variance request from the front yard setback in a highway business district. The front yard setback at this location, which is extreme car wash, is on the east side of the building. It's Broadway Avenue frontage, and our required setback is 15 feet. The applicant has requested that a variance so that could be reduced to 10 feet. The criteria for which variances can be granted are twofold. One of the criteria is set forth in city code, and that states that the board shall be satisfied by the evidence heard before it, that the granting, oh, wait, this is the SDC, or no, the city code, of the variance, that the, any variance permitted in SDCL will alleviate a hardship approaching confiscation as distinguished from special privileges sought by the owner. And in South Dakota codified law, it talks about the Board of Adjustment may authorize the Planning and Zoning Commission to, or excuse me, in specific cases, in order that unwarranted hardship, which constitutes an unreasonable deprivation of the use as distinguished from the mere grant of a privilege, may be avoided. So in either instance, the criteria is granting relief from an extreme hardship. What, the next question I get at the Planning Commission level is what constitutes an extreme hardship? That is, by and large, an instance where you might have an older part of town where a house burns down on a non-conforming lot, and in order for that person to rebuild that home on that non-conforming lot, a variance would be granted to them so that they wouldn't confiscate their use of that property. The ordinance provisions have been in place for many years. They were revisited again at 15 feet in 1995 in the rewrite. We've had several variance requests in the interim, and the Board of Adjustment has held fast to the 15-foot requirement, and city staff recommended that the variance request as presented be denied, and the Planning Commission recommended that it also be denied. And I try to answer any questions you may have.
So in the letter that we got, it was talking about a few different businesses that do not meet that 15-foot requirement. Were they grandfathered in? What's the story in comparison to why they're different?
So there's a number of reasons why that can be different. The specific one that was referenced in the letter was the Holiday Inn Express, and that one does meet the 15-foot front yard setback requirement. As you can imagine, Broadway Avenue is 200 foot wide right-of-way, and within that 200 feet, the state has meandered the roadway in that right-of-way somewhat as you drive up the corridor. So at the location like the Holiday Inn Express, the roadway is in a different place within that right-of-way, so if you measure from the curb or the center line, it may be further or closer to the building that's next door to it than it is a block or two north or a block or two south. If you move further south into the community, you've got some areas that are grandfathered where something might have been built prior to the ordinance in the 1950s or 60s. That might have been. That might have been at 10 feet or eight feet or something. And if there's an empty lot in between those instances, there's a previously established front yard setback then based on the development on either side of it. So the, so something newer that gets built is allowed to have that same setback as the adjoining property. So really, the, every instance in there that was listed, the Holiday Inn Express specifically, does meet the 15-foot front yard setback requirement. The other question the planning commission asked was when was the last time one of these was granted? And I had to go back 17 or 18 years before we even got to this point on a request like this. And it was a, not even a comparable situation. So not comparing apples to apples for the discussion sake.
Other questions from Mr. Mingo? I do see Mr. Koster is here in the audience. Would you like to address the commission before action is taken? Give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Koster. My address is 102 Trustview Drive. I wasn't going to read you this letter, but you've all, Mr. Mingo had sent it to you, so I don't think we need to do that. But I'm just here in case anybody has any questions. Be glad to answer them.
Anybody on the commission have a question? One I have, and if it's Mr. Mingo or you, is this the only option you have for your property?
It is the only option. I'm landlocked on three sides. So the only option for me is the east side on the Broadway side.
Any other questions? All right, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I'll make a motion that we affirm the decision of the planning commission and deny the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to align with the planning commission and deny the request for a variance. Any other further discussion from the commission?
One thing that I would just want to add, and this has nothing really to do with the merits of what's being asked here tonight, and it's just, I suppose, the formality of how this has played out with, you know, originally, this variance request was on our agenda last month, and it got pushed out. And that's something that I was not very happy about. And I shared my feelings with city staff. Mr. Mingo, city manager, had a good 20-minute conversation with Ross. I genuinely was not happy that we pushed this out. That being said, I appreciate city staff because they more or less talked me off the ledge and turned my head around. So I just wanted to also extend my appreciation to city staff for that reason.
All right, now that we have a motion and a second, is there anybody else in the public that would like to address us on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Okay, and just a reminder, the motion is to deny this variance, so that's what you'll be voting on, whether to deny or whether to not deny. Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Old business under number three is a public hearing, consideration of memorandum 21-127, a second reading and a public hearing to consider ordinance 1049, a rezoning from an R2 single-family residential to a B2 highway business. This is for the address of 1301 West 21st Street. Jim Tramp and Jason Tramp owners. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any city commission discussion? Seeing none, anybody in the public wish to address the commission on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Old business number four is consideration of memorandum 21-128, which is a second reading and a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1050, a rezoning of an R2 single-family residential to an R3 two-family residential property. This is at the 1,900 blocks of Kellin Gross Drive and Dakota Street. Jim Tramp and Jason Tramp owners. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any city commission discussion?
These two items that we've been voting on, Dave, can you talk a little bit about the conversation as it played out in the planning commission? I believe these were all 100% in the affirmative. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. This is one of those areas that was, you know, undeveloped substantially, and as Summit Heights developed to the south of it. It was known by all, included references in the comprehensive plan from many years ago, that there'd be a development proposal eventually coming forward for the property. Development around it occurred to the point where the owner was asked to circulate a petition and go through a standard rezoning process rather than a city-initiated rezoning process. The applicant did such, didn't have any comments regarding either proposal other than questions and just inquiries about what Mr. Tramp is planning. The key from staff standpoint and the planning commission's discussion standpoint was to not have any zoning occur that would put a high volume of traffic on a local street. So we were very pleased to see the applicant had the higher volume multiple-family development proposal on Kellin Gross Drive, so it would have access right to 21st Street, which is an arterial after, you know, a quick block up Kellin Gross Drive. And it wouldn't be routing people further south through the main part of the Summit Heights residential area. So all on the planning commission concurred that the rezoning proposals, both of them were a good idea and followed the general provisions of the comprehensive plan.
Any other city commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to address the commission on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Old business number five is consideration of memorandum 21-129, a second reading and a public hearing to consider ordinance 1051, amendments to the City of Yankton zoning ordinance number 711. If approved, would change the maximum allowable height of a structure in the B2 highway business district and B3 central business district from a current 50 feet to 65 feet. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any city commission discussion? Dave, do you want to maybe share with the city commission and the public why this change and what this allows folks to do?
It's something that at the staff level and at the planning commission level that we've been contemplating for quite some time. Periodically, every few years anyway, we'll get a request for a structure that's taller than the 50-foot height limitation. We have had a couple of them recently where they were talking about requesting variances and as opposed to some sort of ordinance amendment. As you know, from staff's position, we would always recommend a review and a look at the ordinance itself and have that apply to everybody rather than consideration of a variance at any individual location. So that was the recommendation. We did a survey of other communities in South Dakota and around the region, trying to determine if there was some magic number for a maximum height in B3 and B2 districts. There really isn't. They go, 50 was the shortest that we saw, and they go all the way up to infinity, where there was communities that didn't have a building height limitation. Based on that information, we looked at other provisions in ordinance sections we have. We have provisions for towers to be 65 feet in these very same zoning districts. So there was just some logic in picking that number. Also, some of the projects that people are doing now, they're, they want additional ceiling heights per floor, and they also want additional space in floor sections to allow for HVAC to be entirely enclosed. So the floor sections of multiple-story buildings get bigger, maybe two and a half feet, two, two and a half feet, rather than they used to just be, you know, a two-by-12 or something, one foot. So for all those reasons, just at a planning commission discussion, it just kind of made sense to consider something a little beyond 50 feet, which would essentially allow an additional story on a number of these buildings in the downtown and in the B2 district.
And maybe this is a question for Commissioner Villanueva, but with our fire department equipment, is there a height limit on the ladders or anything like of that nature? That, there's a height limit, but is it greater than 60, less than 65 feet?
That would be, I don't want to misspeak, so that would be something we probably need to ask the chief.
If I may, that was the first place I went when we had this discussion, was right to the fire department to find out whether or not that was going to be a problem, and it was not a problem with our equipment.
All right, any other discussion from the commission? All right, anybody in the public like to address us on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Old business number six is consideration of memorandum 21-119 regarding our quest for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022, from South Dakota Publishing, doing business as Muddy Mo's Coffee House. Katie Hunoff, owner. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any city commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Onto new business. Item number one is consideration of memorandum 21-106 regarding the SAC Summit Activities Center rental rate increase for 2023. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll start it off with city commission discussion. Todd, would you like to share with the commission or in the public what we're looking at here? It looks like it's an approximate 3% increase, and maybe why we look out this far in making this decision tonight?
We have a city school committee, and it was been a number of years ago, we looked at rates, talked about setting them at the market level. And at that time, commissions, school boards, city staff, school staff, nobody felt comfortable making that type of increase to rates. So as we talk through it, this is what the plan that we came up with. As I said, this, we've been doing this now for a number of years. So we look out, because groups book so far in advance, especially if you start thinking about the dance studios in town and things of those nature, where they're going to have these events year in and year out. This way, we can increase the rental rates well in advance, publish it, give it to those groups, so they know what's coming as they look at what they need to do with their budgets, charging tickets, and that, that way. So again, as it says in the memo, we've, every year come, and we're just three years out. And so this has now become just a yearly, yearly thing to increase the rental rates by 3%. And that's, again, a number that the school board and the city commission and staff all agreed on a number of years ago, that we should increase the rates. Bye.
Any questions from city commission?
Can you remind us all, Todd, what does this generate for revenue on an annual basis typically?
So this would be for gym rates, both auxiliary and main. It would be for the main theater and for the small theater. And I don't have a revenue number in my head. I'd have to look that up. Again, we, the city, don't collect this fee. The school collects it, and then they pay us 15% of the fees. Again, going back to the formula that's in place. So I'd have to look at the budget to see what our 15% has been, and then figure out what the total revenue collected would have been.
Other questions? All right. Seeing none, is there anybody in the public that would like to address the commission on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-99 regarding an agreement with HDR in reference to projects to improve our wastewater system. Is there, what's your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
So moved.
Second.
I think we have a motion, a motion, and a second. City commission discussion. I see Amy's got her mic on, so Amy, would you like to lead the discussion on what this is in reference to?
I certainly don't need to, but I certainly will give a little background for the public's benefit. And Kyle, please jump up if I get this wrong. So we're making our wastewater project a little more confusing. That's really the basics of it, and the second basic is that Kyle's going to spend more money if you approve this action. So just as a recap, the project that we're looking at and that we need to, the construction that we need to do at our wastewater treatment plant is for a couple reasons. One, the damage that was done in 2019 due to the flooding event. And second, wastewater plant runs consistently all the time. We need to do some upgrades to buy more time and get more life out of our plant until we make a final decision on what it is that we want to do ultimately with our wastewater plant. So that's where we're starting. And HDR is helping us with, walk through the EDA grant process and EDA sort of funding process as well as planning District 3. In order to get that ultimate answer of what it is we want to do in the long-term future with our wastewater plant, we need to do some master planning. And so we need to have a collection system master plan, a distribution system master plan, and a wastewater treatment system master plan. So in future commissions, maybe five to seven to 10 years from now, that commission can determine based on this information, what do we want to do? Do we want to build a new plant? Do we want to retrofit our current plant? Do we want to, you know, I don't know, pump all our wastewater somewhere else? I don't think that will be, would be the cost-effective solution, but whatever it is that we come up with, so we can make a decision. So as you know, the project received funding through EDA. Those will be utilized for construction projects and for, and for portions of the project that are bid out, such as the surveying, the GIS data collection, and televising. The state revolving loan fund will be used for engineering services and the required 20% match for the EDA grant and overages on construction projects that come in higher than the estimated at the preliminary engineering report. We have already been told or advised by HDR as well as by other folks that we can just expect that we're not going to come in with construction as the preliminary engineering report recommended costs in 2019, because the world is a lot different than 2019, and we're living in that world. So we're going to have a higher-than-expected cost for the construction projects. Maybe the construction market will settle out a little bit by then. We hope that's true, but we want to make sure that we're, we're planning for the worst-case scenario in terms of costs. Initially, we had come to you and said we wanted to do a but we want to make sure that we're, we're planning for the worst-case scenario in terms of costs. Initially, we had come to you and said we wanted to do a request for a proposal for this, this work and, and put together a scope and then hear from all, a whole lot of engineering firms and decide who we wanted to go with. We've changed our mind on that having learned more about the scope and more about the work. So we've learned that by using EDA funding, if we put together a scope that's gone through the RFP process and paid for by EDA funding, we're tied to exactly what's in that scope and nothing less, which could mean we could pay for a whole lot of work that we don't need. If we are paying for this scope out of ourselves and we're working with city funds and not paying for that with EDA funding, we can kind of let on and off the gas pedal as our engineering firm recommends. And we can walk through it sort of in step-by-step as opposed to agreeing to something completely upfront and then having to follow through with it. So we've been through another huge project with HDR, as you know, and every time I've been turning on my faucet, water's coming out, signed for me of a really great project. And we have a great relationship with them. We have a great relationship with the folks on their wastewater side and we have a lot of trust in them. So we feel good, good, actually we feel great about recommending them to you and working with them through this process of defining what it is and how much work we're going to need to perform in able to get the answers that you want in the future or that a future commission wants as to what the best thing is to do long-term with our wastewater plant. So this request is a engineering contract with HDR in the amount of not to exceed the $387,729 to do those master planning, to create those master plans with us and provide us with that scope so that we can continue on with the construction projects and continue on getting closer to making that decision and getting the information we need to develop scenarios about what it is we might want to consider long-term in the future. That's basically where we are. There will be other subsequent contracts, so HDR won't necessarily be performing all the surveying, for example. Within this contract, there'll be a lot of work. So those types of things, GIS data collection, surveying, some of those elements will also be bid out. So there will be other folks doing work under this contract. This is sort of just an overarching guide. Kyle, am I, how'd I do?
Really good.
Really good? Okay. So Kyle's here. We also have HDR here if you have technical questions. But this explanation comes after about four or five meetings of Kyle trying to help me to understand what it is we're doing next. And I guarantee you that there'll be another next in this process because this is completely unfamiliar territory for us in a completely unfamiliar market and in a really unprecedented time. So we do not know yet if we can co-mingle ARP funds or future stimulus funds with current funds. We're not sure about all those things yet, but as we go along, we're certainly going to try to leverage as much assistance financially as we can because there was, will end up being, you know, very costly project. But we do have the EDA funds in place and we also have, as you know, the $4.5 million state revolving loan fund committed if we should need all of that.
All right. And I know Kyle has been in front of the city commission before and discussed the projects that are needing to be done. I would imagine one of the things that city manager Leon said is the flexibility. This is an old facility. It's like a new old house. As we go to remodel it, I'm sure we'll find things. So the flexibility I'm sure is key here. Kyle, anything else to share with the city commission?
Questions?
Are there any questions for Kyle or for HDR since they're here?
I have a question for HDR since they're here.
Perfect.
In, in particular, when, when I rejoined the city commission last year, HDR was involved in what I think is, fair to say, a very innovative wastewater treatment facility upgrade that happened in Lincoln, Nebraska. And in particular, it just had to do with how the city was able to not only work with HDR, but some other forward thinkers to essentially generate biogas out of their facility and, and sell that as a, you know, way to generate additional revenue for, for the city of Lincoln. But if, just out of curiosity, I don't know if it's even something you'd be interested in sharing, but can you talk about some innovative things that should be at the top of our mind when it comes to wastewater treatment facilities? And, and I say that because what had to happen down in Lincoln was the city did have to invest some money over and above what we may just consider just the standard, here's what you need to do in order to keep the sewer flowing in the right direction. So maybe there's some innovative things that we should be aware of before we go into, you know, spending some big bucks or maybe even spending more than we might typically.
Hey, go ahead and step up and if you want to introduce yourself to the commission, please.
Yes, good evening. My name's Bill Moran. I am the water lead for HDR out of Sioux Falls. So I'm not a wastewater guy by my technical background. Delron Peters, who I think has been here before, is that guy. But to address your, your question, yeah, I think, and we actually have had our biogas person down in here and looking at your facility, your existing facility, those types of things, biogas, generating energy, trying to make your treatment plant and your treatment facility as green as possible is something that, you know, is, is part of the master planning process. So what we've done to date on your, on your wastewater plant is we've done basically a condition assessment. And the work that, that is being designed right now is basically to bring your plant up to, you know, existing standard for condition so that it'll, it'll be a reliable, resilient plant. The master plan part of it, part of what you're looking at tonight is looking forward. How is this plant going to carry you for the next 30 years? We know that some of the regulations are going to change. We know that there's changes in the industry, the biogas, those types of things that need to be considered when you're looking forward, things that you may want to look forward to, to implement. So that's where in the master plan, you know, we'll identify what those opportunities are, you know, some programming costs associated with those, and then, and then put out a timeline. Some of those things may be near-term, some may be long-term. The other thing, as Amy mentioned, will be to answer a question at least at a high level, do you want to continue to invest in your wastewater plant where it is, or do you want to take a look at moving it elsewhere? And what are the challenges or opportunities associated with that? It sounds easy, you know, it's, it's, there's some environmental challenges and physical challenges to do it, but that's, that's part of the wastewater master plan. I might just, while I have the floor, a couple of things. You know, there's two other master plans. One, one of the master plans is the sanitary sewer, the collection system. The flooding that happened here a few years ago, you know, there, there, we don't really know exactly what impacts that had on the sanitary sewer system. So that's what this study does is, is to model the collection system, to take some flow measurements in that system and also to do a television inspection and cleaning of some of the main lines in the system so we can kind of do a condition assessment of the sanitary sewer, make sure it's okay. And then the third part of the master plan is the water distribution system master plan. And that, that actually is, is looking at the water side. You know, we've taken care of the treatment system. You got, you got good dependable, resilient water for a long time forward. But what we really don't know is how that's being distributed in, you know, throughout the city, what's happening in terms of your pressures, make sure that you got adequate fire flow in all areas of the community. And then, you know, anymore, there's also water quality issues associated with this distribution system that's something that has come about in the last 10 years is you need to look at water age and what's happening with the water quality in your distribution system as well. So those are all things that will be looked at as part of the, and, and the other thing is, is the condition of the water towers. So it includes inspection of the water towers as well. So it, again, it's to build a comprehensive capital improvement plan that doesn't have to be done immediately, but give you direction for the long-term in all three of these systems. Not sure I totally answered your question, but with our wastewater people and our, you know, we, we have experts in Sioux Falls in each one of these areas, water, wastewater, the collection and the distribution system. But we also have regional and national experts that will help us along the way. That Lincoln project will have the same people that, that were consulted on the Lincoln project involved in your project as well.
We can certainly, Commissioner Mybaum, ask Delron to give us some thoughts on that too. Another reason we really do appreciate HDR is the fact of having Mr. Peters, Delron Peters' expertise. I mean, there just isn't anybody better in the business than him, in my opinion. And I, I really think that we have a really good relationship with him and he'll, he will look for those innovations, but also not, he's an out-of-the-box person, but not an outer-space person. So just because it's something that somebody's doing somewhere in the world, it won't necessarily be the right fit for us. But he's, he's just a really good thinker that way. And so I'm excited about having him on the team and, and of course Kyle and Tanner and, and their team too, work really well together, which makes a big difference when you're essentially, you know, committing to a few years with HDR here by moving forward with us.
Will the possibility of gray water distribution be part of the big questions we're looking at?
Yeah, that's, I don't think, we actually haven't really looked at that, but that's, that's a thought. As you look at, you know, the thing about Yankton is, is, you know, what's the best use of that resource, your water resource? And in many communities, you know, that, that are short on water, using gray water for irrigation systems and things like that are a possibility. And we can talk about that. It's not presently in our scope of services. Other questions? Thank you.
Other questions for either Kyle, Bill, city manager? I know it's not always a fun topic to talk about, but I know we all do appreciate turning on our taps and getting clean water. And I know I sure appreciate the dirty water and stuff going away and being dealt with as well. So any other city commission discussion? Anybody else from the public like to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. New Business Number Three is consideration of memorandum 21-120 and resolution 21-43, giving approval to certain sewer facility improvements, giving approval to the issuance and sale of a revenue bond to finance directly or indirectly the improvements to the facilities, approving the form of a loan agreement and the revenue bond, and pledging revenues and collateral to secure the payment of a revenue bond, and creating special funds and accounts for the administration of funds for operation of the system and retirement of the revenue bond. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City manager Leon, could I maybe have you clarify? I know this came up in our media review on Friday, just kind of just telling the public they hear the word bond and maybe think this is a vote or something. Can you clarify what exactly this action is doing?
No, it's not. I mean, it's a vote for the city commission at this point. But really what this does is gives approval for Al and his team to move forward and work with the folks to issue and sale the revenue bond. So that is the $4.5 million I was talking about. If we don't need all those funds, we won't use those, obviously. But we need commission action. Everything's been approved by the state in terms of, that we're on the clean water fund, that we've been approved for that 4.5 million, but we need action that it can go out and it be issued, so go out to the market. So that's what this action is.
Any other city commission discussion? Seeing none, anybody in the public like to address the commission on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Mayor Moser. Aye, motion carries. Number Four under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-122 regarding a request by the city of Yankton Parks and Recreation Department for a fireworks display on July 4th, 2021. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any, any city commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to discuss this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Let there be fireworks. I love it. Okay. Number Five under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-124 and resolution 21-49 regarding a request by River City Domestic Violence Center and the River City Family Connections for Special Events Parking, Parking Ordinance, number 933, to be in place during the Walk a Mile and Family Fun Day on August 28th, 2021. And this is for the Green Space down by Levy Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any city commission discussion? All right, anybody in the public want to address the commission? Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number Six under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-125 regarding Kids in the Park events for the month of July. That would take place on Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see Brittany LaCroix is here and I am anxious to hear more about what we've put together. So would you share that with the commission and the public?
This with you guys. Kids in the Park is a new event series in Fana Memorial Park just south of the playground by disc golf hole number 14. It's designed with, what I keep saying, it's designed with your kids in mind. As a mom, I'm noticing that we don't have a lot of just kids events. There's a lot of kids event, or there's a lot of events that are family-friendly, but they're not designed just for kids. And so this kind of came out of that. It's a spin off of Music at the Meridian, but for the kids. Every Saturday, we have some type of entertainment. We have some big-name bands like Cuckoo Kangaroo. They are a very fun, very silly group. They're going to get the kids just moving and grooving. They talk about a lot of different things, some of stuff that maybe goes with wastewater or just other very fun things. And they really get the kids moving. And so I'm very excited about them. We have some partnerships with the library to bring in Big Bang Bubbles or some entertainer, entertainers that don't suit their facility but works over at Memorial Park. We're also doing a partnership with Connecting Cultures and we're bringing in The Lucky Band. They are a two-time Grammy, Latin Grammy winner. And they're just very fun. They mix Spanish and, and English and, and just bringing the cultures, combining the cultures together. So we're really excited to bring, you know, to have some partnerships with a few different organizations here in town. We're also working with the local dance studios to have a half hour of movement. What we've learned as we are working with some of these, they're called Kindy Music is what the kids band is called, Kindy Music. They can only play for about 45 minutes before the kids really lose interest. So they're, the, the main part of our event will be 45 minutes, but we're working with local dance studios to do some fun movement activities beforehand. And then we'll also have some other organizations to help do some fun things afterwards. The event will be from 9:30 to 11:30. And we chose that time because the Aquatic Center, which is just a few steps away, opens up at 11:30. So we're really hoping that it not only attracts our community, but it brings people into our community here for maybe the weekend, but if not the weekend, at least the entire the weekend, but if not the weekend, at least the entire day, coming in the morning and then heading over to our new aquatics facility later in that afternoon. And I'm happy to answer any questions if I buzzed through something that I maybe missed.
This is called Kids in the Park. What about adults who want to be kids so they can attend this event?
So if you have an inner kid, there's nothing that says you have to bring a kid, just bring the inner kid inside of you.
Okay, so like, City Manager Leon and I don't have to find little kids to bring with us?
I have some if that would make you feel more comfortable. I will bring them and I will go, but you can come.
Has anyone seen our city attorney on the rock climbing wall Facebook post? I think we're going to start calling him Cuckoo Kangaroo.
Any other questions for Brittany or city commission discussion on this agenda item?
What is the, what is the age range for the kids? Just throwing that out there. Is it like 10 and under or up to?
So as we're planning this, if it's not your inner kid, we're assuming it's going to be, we're planning for 10 and under, but assuming it's probably going to be eight and under. Today's kids are getting cooler, much younger, and so I really think we're going to see a lot of eight-year-olds and under, but it's, we're trying to get that 10-year-old and under, if I can be cool, but we'll try.
All right, other questions? Well, thank you, Brittany, for putting all the work into that. I think it's a great addition to the wonderful aquatic center that we have open to add to that and really, truly make it a family fun day for lots of folks. Thank you. Other, any other questions? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-130 and resolution 21-51 regarding the purchase of TASER equipment. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, you want to discuss what this project is doing?
Sure, I'll take a shot at it, and Chief Harris is here, too, if I'm not explaining it correctly. The City of Yankton's police officers are equipped with TASER equipment currently, and one of the things that our police administration would like to change is sort of how we are equipped. So we are currently in a cross-draw situation, meaning the TASERS are situated, so you're crossing with your dominant hand, and we know from recent events in our region that in the really heat of a moment at times, your reflexes, officers' reflexes may go to a dominant hand situation, and we also use, officers use their dominant hand for their firearm. So we saw what happened in a recent situation, and so our administration would like to switch to, I think it's called a straight draw, so your non-dominant hand will be situated for the TASER, and your dominant hand would be situated towards, for your firearm. Our duty belts are not set up that way currently. We did find another agency who is upgrading their equipment, a much larger agency, and they would like to partner with us by selling us some of their equipment and asking us to purchase fewer pieces of newer equipment, so it's really a trade, for lack of a better word, and that's Westminster, Colorado Police Department. So once in place, we will be working and retraining all the officers on non-dominant hand TASER and dominant hand only for firearm. One of the really valuable pieces of equipment we have is this virtual training that our officers can train on, and it is very real-time, and you actually are using a similar firearm, the exact firearm of what we have, only it's with an air cartridge, so it's very realistic. So they'll work to train on that, and we think going forward, we can't eliminate all things, but we think we have a better chance by equipping the officers in that manner, avoiding any type of situation like that, and keeping our citizens and our officers as safe as possible. So unless there's something Chief Harris wants to add, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any other questions from the city commission? All right, seeing none, anybody in the public like to address the commission on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Schram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number eight under new business is a funding request in consideration of memorandum 21-132 regarding a funding request from the Riverboat Days Committee. The request that they're asking for tonight is in the amount of $20,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there city commission discussion?
I see we have Riverboat Days members here, so if they would like to talk about their plans for their return, that'd be.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you to all the Riverboat Days committee members that are here and sat through the entire agenda just to get to this item tonight. Please state your name and what you do with Riverboat Days.
Honorable Mayor, I just about said fellow commissioners, managers, Manager Leon and staff and guests, hey, it's good to be back. I come here, obviously, in favor of, hey, quit laughing, I'm trying to be serious. This is, I come as the president of the Riverboat Days Group, and what a fascinating group to work with, and this is a bold proactive approach. This is different. Obviously, we've fallen on very challenging times, and we took the approach of, we're not going to sit back and let this die. Thirty-eight years is a long time, and hardly any events like this can be the, not only a premier event for the whole area, but the premier event, 70,000 to 100,000 people consistently. And our board always looks for creative ways, and we thought, what could enhance our festival this year more than increasing, having a big band like Jody Come, and then children's? We've noticed that people are bringing more children. Now, remember, this is, this is unique from any other, any other group that we know of in the area that's free. Our goal is to, a family to come down to the park and completely not have a penny in their pocket and have, they can, they can take in entertainment, it's all free, they can go to the amphitheater or the live stage, they can go, and there's rides, there's the playground equipment, and so the families, the crafts, just phenomenal. So I could go on and on, and every one of you here know how big of an event this is, but this is, this is one time where we thought we could jumpstart with going a little bit out on a limb to say, let's, let's put a big show on. Let's come back bigger than ever, and we are excited. We're getting a lot of good comments, and we're really excited about move forward for 2021, and with your help, we're going to have the big show. And also, at that same time, we're going to have increasing, we're going to have, we, the inflatables, we own all those children's rides, we maintain them and store them, so we're going to work on, we actually have a new inflatable. So anyway, I don't want to go on and on, but good to see you all again, and please, vote yea.
I'm John Kraft, I'm co-chair of the Riverboat Days Committee, along with Randy Oliver. Randy was on Traveling for Business this week, so he couldn't be with us, but just want to reiterate a lot of the things that Jake said. It's a, it's a premier event for our area, and with the, everything that we've all been through in the last year and a half, we really wanted to try and, and kind of kick-start the event again, refresh it a little bit. As a board, we're kind of excited about this year again, you know, it's, as you age a festival like this, you kind of get in a rut a little bit, so we kind of like to get out of that rut and try some new things. We're also working on our infrastructure, I guess you'd say, so over the last few years, we've committed to rebuilding some of those aging pieces of our equipment. We've replaced tents, we've replaced an inflatable this year, the new obstacle course will be here this year, so that's a pretty sizable investment as well, and we're just looking to try and, you know, get some excitement built on the event this year again. So we're looking for a little help just to get us over the hump and just to give us an idea how this will work with a little bit bigger band, a little more entertainment, and just to see what that does for us. So I mean, I'd be willing to answer any questions you have as well, so.
Vendors, 100% filled out? Everybody's coming back or more coming back?
Yeah, we are full. The arts, we spoke with the arts a couple of weeks ago. They are down a few, but they'll still have, I believe, over 120. They had a few people that just didn't want to come back, they just didn't get back in the business after being out for a year. We found a little bit of that on the food vendor side, but again, we're full there as well, so we'll have a full park of vendors on the food and art side. Arts is also very excited about this. This is their, you know, their main fundraiser for the year. They have all the, all the arts vendors, that's their main fundraising, so, yeah, we've had good luck. Everyone's excited to come back. The year off, I think, you know, the vendors are just as excited as we are to come back, so.
Any other?
John, quick question for you, and to make sure that I'm completely transparent for the public, I am a member of the Riverboat Days Board of Directors, but could you explain to the public and the commission, kind of behind the scenes, how long the planning takes and kind of the work that goes into putting on the show?
Sure, we, we really never quit meeting. As soon as the event is done in August, we'll meet the following week to recap the event, and then we'll start meeting monthly after that again to try and plan for the next year and even a year down the road. We'll take December off and then get back at it in January, and then in June, we'll meet every other week, and in July, we start meeting weekly. So the board members that are here can attest to the amount of hours they put in planning, trying to come up with new ideas, new events for the, for Riverboat Days, and it's a lot of hours, a lot of time, especially setup week. We'll spend a week setting everything up and then packing it all up on the Monday afterwards, so some of the board members, I don't think, realized when they got on that they were actually going to have to do some manual labor, but we, we get them trained pretty quick, so.
Thanks, John, and to be clear, too, I want to make sure that it's record that the Board of Directors are volunteers, correct?
Yes, everyone's a volunteer. Everything that's made down in the park as far as revenue is put right back into the event. We don't, we don't pay any board members. We do make donations into the community. We have groups that come and help us, the Boy Scouts, ICE Association, different church groups, some of the college groups that come in in return for them working in the children's area or helping us with garbage pickup, we'll make a donation to those organizations. So we try and support as many of those organizations as we can. If they're willing to come and help us, we'll definitely help them in return.
Awesome. Well, I know you all do a lot of work, and Riverboat Days was one of the first festivities I went to when I moved to Yankton, so fond memories of all the years gone by, and I know there was definitely a bummer sigh across this community last year when we had to cancel it due to COVID, and a lot of excitement hearing that you're bringing it back, so kudos to you and the rest of your board for taking that year to reset and get right back at it. I believe Dave, looks like he might have a few words. Dave, if you want to step up to the mic, tell us who you are.
Yes, my name is Dave Wright, a lifelong resident of the Yankton area, and as far as Riverboat Days is concerned, I can't remember a time that I wasn't involved. One of the things that I think that I found out after a while was, was that I didn't know what was going on in Yankton. I was in the park, as we've been told here just recently. We all show up on Wednesday, and we work all day long, every day, and Monday of the next week, and then for the next week, we're really tired, and we don't know what went on in Yankton. And so I decided a number of years ago that I was going to come up with a, with a new fundraiser. We have a, we have a raffle, and we sell tickets for that, and we get contributions from various businesses in Yankton to, to, to give away as prizes, but I came up with another idea, and my idea was eat your way across Yankton. Start at the north end of town and eat at every single place that there is to eat and give it away as a prize. So, hey, you know, one of the things was that we had heard kind of, you know, from some people was, was that, well, don't expect people to eat in Yankton during Riverboat Days. You got all those vendors down at the park. Nobody wants to go to McDonald's or Wendy's or Perkins or any of those places to eat, do they? So I, I thought, well, I'm going to go out anyway, and I'm going to raise some money. And I started at the north end of town, and I went to every single restaurant and every single eating place I could find, and you know what they told me? Riverboat Days is the busiest weekend of the entire year. I was astounded. How could that be? One of the places told me that, you know, they had college kids that were working in the restaurant, and they were offering them incentives to stay for an extra week and work because they needed them, because it was the busiest weekend of the year. Now, where does BBB money come from? It comes from those, those businesses, busiest weekend of the year. And so I think it's important to realize that the effects of Riverboat Days aren't confined to south of Levy Street. They extend all the way to the north end of town, and they extend all the way out to the lake, and they extend to Vermillion, and they extend to other towns within a 60-mile radius of Yankton, because you cannot find a hotel room or motel room in this town. They are booked. Right now, all of them are booked. BBB money. And so I really think that we're only asking for what we're already giving you. We're giving you the busiest weekend of the year, we're just asking for some of that money back, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else from the Riverboat Days Committee who braved this meeting with us want to step up and say anything? You're happy to sit in back. Okay. Quiet support, right in the back. Al, you want to give the commission an update on where we're at with Triple B? Al or Amy?
Yeah, I have the number, Al, written down here. I got that from Lisa. How Dave feels is how I kind of feel every week. I'm in City Hall a week, and then I leave City Hall Friday, and I don't know what's happened. And I have another idea for a fundraiser, but I'm not on the committee, and I don't want to be. Your imbalance for, for Triple B was $629,131 current balance. Triple B, $504,524.03. Remember that we have not, we still have six months of revenue to come in, and we have not paid out everything that's been requested, so just keep that in mind, but if the question is, can you afford to do this, the answer is yes. The large question we always have to talk about is that we can only spend it once, that's what Al tells us, so, and over time, we can't spend more than we take in. Who knew? But, but yes, but you can afford, afford to do this, and staff has recommended making this investment in our human capital, which I think this is a good year to do that, and Riverboat Days is a good place.
Thank you for that update, Amy. So last time, any other questions from the city commission?
I just have a comment. When Dave was talking about how in a 60-mile radius, you can't find any paused, I thought he was going to say parking spot, that would be.
That could be true, too. Could you do a parking spot study this next year and figure out?
that, and Riverboat Days is a good place.
Thank you for that update, Amy. So last time, any other questions from the City Commission?
I just have a comment. When Dave was talking about how in a 60-mile radius, you can't find any, paused, I thought he was going to say parking spot.
That could be true, too. Could you do a parking spot study this next year and figure out how close you can get?
We have trouble.
Yeah, that's right. There you go.
Hey, Steph, I just want to say one thing. I would like to thank the committee for thinking progressively and differently. You know, if the Rib Fest was any indication of what the summer's going to be like, I think everyone is ready to get back and be with people and have fun and enjoy the summer. And it's going to be a great, busy summer. And thank you for thinking for something a little bit bigger, better, different, to draw people in at the last end of the summer celebration. So thank you, guys, for thinking progressively on that.
Well, and I love food, so I want to know how I get in this eat across Yankton challenge. I'm, I'm willing to take it on. I'm going to have to walk more in the lazy river, but... All right. Any other thoughts from the Commission? Anybody else in the public want to address the Commission in relation to this agenda item? Charlie is not standing, so let's take a vote. Al, quick.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Shram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Epstein.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again to the Riverboat Days Committee and all the hard work and time you put into making a fabulous, fabulous community event. We look forward to participating this year. All right. Last item under new business is agenda item number nine, which is consideration of memorandum 21-133 in support of resolution 21-52, which was regarding an ADA downtown parking designation or a handicap parking spot by the boathouse. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to address the Commission on this? Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Shram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Epstein.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next agenda item is to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personal matters under SDL 1-25-2. Can I get a motion